Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to a quarter. This is a regular session of the Boot and Township Board of Education held for the purpose of transacting appropriate board business in compliance with Chapter 231 laws of 1975. The notes of this meeting was advertised in the Morris County Daily Record. Copies of the agenda of this meeting were properly posted and made available to the public.
Mrs. Borde.
Here.
Mr. Brander.
Here.
Mrs. Cabana.
Here.
Mr. Chen.
Here.
Mr. Eaton.
Here.
Mrs. Hermy.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. LaBar.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Here.
Also present, Dr. Angelo Lo, superintendent's principal, and I see our representative, Mrs. McBride. We have court.
Thank you, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda this evening is Ms. Maile from Miss Sabatia and Company, who is going to present our annual comprehensive financial report.
Hello, everybody, I'm just gonna pass out a summary so that you don't have to decipher all this information from a two hundred page document you have.
Thank you.
Do you want a copy? I just said, okay. Apologize for having my back to you. So I'm gonna go over the financial highlights and if any point you have any questions, please feel free to, you know, let me know. So on the top of the first folder is back and it's both sides, sorry. So on the one side, I apologize for not numbering the page, but I'm looking at the side where it has the fund balance and starts with restricted income balances. Everybody got it? All right. So, the top of this page has the comparison of the fund balances between the two years. So at 6/30/22, the overall fund balance is $3,245, which was about $100,000 increase from the year before. Of the $3,245, most of that is restricted various reserves. So you have $347,000 in encumbrances, which are goods that you've placed an order for us of June 30th but haven't received yet. $846,000 in capital reserve that you can use for any projects in your long range facilities plan. $350,000 in maintenance reserve that you can use for any required maintenance. $40,000 in unemployment compensation that is being used for any unemployment claims. $280,000 in current year excess surplus, which you need, you have to include in your '23-'24 budget year. $285,000 of prior year excess surplus that you're using in your '22-'23 budget along with the $298,000. So the total is about $583,000 that you're using in your '22-'23 budget year. $788,000 in unassigned fund balance. Keep in mind that this is still at a 4%, so even from last year, the state had passed legislation to increase the cap on the unassigned fund balance from 2% to 4% temporarily for two years. So, as 6/30/22, that was the last year, in '23, it's gonna go back down to the 2%. The middle is a, just an analysis of the overall increase of the $100,000 in fund balance. So we have $140,000 excess in local revenue. $186,000 excess in state revenue, which is mostly your extraordinary A and nonpublic transportation. Just take note, take note that the extraordinary A is still being awarded districts at higher percentage. So for '21 year end and '22 year end, it was reversed at like 90% about, and previously it's been at forty something, fifty percent. $1.1 million of unexpended budget appropriation, when you factor in the $347,000 of encumbrances, that left, you're left with about 200, I mean, $826,000 unspent, which is only about 5% of your budget. And that helps, goes towards building back up the fund balance that you've been using to support your budget as well. 380, 287 of surplus used. $333,000 of prior year encumbrances that were liquidated. You withdrew $450,000 from capital reserve for the roof replacement project, and then you withdrew additional $338,000 to active budget for the prior excess dating. Now, the bottom is just a trend of how much fund balance you've been using. I don't have it on the printout in front of you, but in your, in the '20-'21 year end, you used about $657,000. '21-'22, '62-25, '22-'23 using $8583, and '23-'24, the excess right now is the 280. So, your trend is to, you know, appropriate additional funding in that year to help offset budget. Any questions so far?
Yes, could you please go back to the middle section and go through maybe just a little slower for maybe for someone else, and just read through each of those lines and what each of those means?
Sure.
Thanks. Starting from the excess in local revenue.
So when, what I mean by excess or deficit is the difference between what you anticipate as revenue versus what you actually took in. So, the $148,000 excess in local revenue. Give you a bit more detail.
John, what's the question? Does this, why does this get made available to public, or is this something that we hold?
This is something we don't, it's available through Oprah, something like that.
So, you had, the district had budgeted, anticipated $14 million and change in terms of revenue from local sources, which includes your local tax levy, and took in $14,265. So the excess is $140,000.
But the majority of that is additional revenues and also refund back from Mountain Lakes for what they owed us. That's why we're above and beyond what we originally budgeted.
So that includes the Mountain Lakes?
That includes the refund. Because we really can't anticipate that until the year end.
Yeah, gotcha.
The excess in the state revenue, the $186,000, that's from extraordinary A and nonpublic transportation A.
And then the unexpended budget appropriations that we use as?
That is what.
That would be.
Oh, but 347 of that are encumbrances, which we see above, so that leaves us?
$826,000 unspent. And I mentioned before that, that's only about 5% of unspent funds for the budget, which is small.
Okay, then we pull a surplus from '21-'22?
It utilized fund balance during the '21-'22 year of $287,000 to help offset the budget, to support the budget.
Okay.
$333,000 is prior year encumbrances that are liquidated. So what happens is, you have encumbrances at the end of each school year. It gets rolled forward into the next subsequent school year that gets pretty much added to the budget and it gets liquidated.
Okay.
Or paid out.
Gotcha.
The 450 budget withdrawal from capital reserve, you do it through the budget process. That was the roof replacement project. And then the $338,000, you do it every year, you appropriate additional funding. You're allowed by the state to do that if you have any excess state revenue, which is extraordinary A any of that.
We use those for those one-time, one-shot projects that are not ongoing, that you have to keep, you know, funding each year. Because this, these amounts may dry up, we're not really sure, year to year, they threaten that they might not be there next year, so do those projects when you can.
Yeah, and that, it goes kind of back to what I mentioned before, that the extraordinary A, you've been getting a excess amount or more than normal amount from the state for the last couple of years. I don't know if that's gonna?
Gotcha, okay.
Yep.
And did you review the bottom part of this page also?
The bottom part of this page?
Yeah.
Yes. So the bottom part, I always just like to show a trend of how much fund balance you're using each year. So, for the '21-'22, overall, it's $625,000. '22-'23, $583,000, which is your current budget year. And then in '23-'24, what you require use is $280,000.
Which is the current year excess surplus.
Yes.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
And we just always just recommend that, just be steadfast, steady in terms of how much fund balance you're using, because you know every year that you can regenerate that amount, because you never wanna see the trend going up unless you have, you know, increased revenue, and that sort of makes that too.
Thank you.
All right, the second page on the top, or the back of your page, the top is a recap of activities in the capital maintenance reserve. The maintenance reserve started out with $925,000 or $926,000 around it, and you took out the 450 for the roof replacement project and was able to put back $370,000. So you ended the year with $846,000. And then maintenance reserve stayed the same at $350,000. The middle is the food service or your milk fund. So, as you can see, the, there's really not a lot of changes from the year before. You have an increase in expenses, so your net position or fund balance at the end of the year, it went from about $4,000 down to $1,300.
The increases in expenses due to?
Well, that's like costs and everything else, cost and everything else, but we, we're just running milk out of that program, you know, some districts will use this to run their entire food service program.
It's a big jump, though.
And then the bottom is a recap of all your long-term liabilities. For budgeting purposes, you really just need to, you know, focus on the finance purchases, which are your capital leases. And that's, you have a lease for school buses, so at the end of the year, it's about, you have $66,000 left on that. Compensated absences, that's just an estimate of what the accruing of the pension liability is at, you know, certain point in time. So at 6/30/22, it's about $221,000. So it's not much of an increase from the balance previous year. The pension liability is $1,451. That is kind of outside of control of the district. It's a number that's calculated by the state division of pension and they release to report every single year, but the school is required to report that liability in district-wide pension statements.
But it's the state's liability, not divisional.
Then, net pension, well, that's what they calculate.
What is ERIP then?
Oh, the ER, that's the early retirement.
Early retirement center program for employee from many years ago. We're winding down with that, no longer going to be responsible for it. It was a program that the state offered that allowed districts to do it, but basically it's their buyouts. If it was maybe 20 years ago, or pretty close.
Yeah, it's like 15, 20 years ago.
My previous district, we didn't recommend doing it, and some districts did, and apparently this district did it.
Any other questions in terms of the financials?
The, the absences table, that's part of the mathism with our last agreement with union or?
No, so basically, you want to explain it right, I can explain it real quick. Basically what it is, is a number that the state wants us to put in there. If you shut down your doors, that would be your liability to pay out everybody with all their compensated absence, so it's really a number that keeps floating from year to year. Realistically, it's a liability that you probably will never pay out. Just little by little, as people retire, you will pay out, but it's a number they're asking us to report. So based on the number eligible days that somebody might have, you closed your doors tomorrow, you have a liability like that, so the chances of that happening are pretty low.
Is this on our balance statement?
This is, so, a school, in this big book here, a New Jersey school district, because you know New Jersey, they make everything complicated, you operate on kind of, it's reported on three basis accounting. So for the school district itself, on the operational basis, you guys operate on the budgetary basis accounting. And then, what we have to do in order to, you know, complete this book, is that we have to convert that to accrual, GAAP basis. And then additionally, there's also a district-wide basis accounting, which includes all your long-term liabilities we just discussed, and your capital assets, which is your facilities, equipment, and all that stuff.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. So it's not, it's not on the net asset statement that we look at anymore?
No, I don't believe so. Just instead, there are schedules there.
Just on the district-wide thing for the book?
It's like things they want us to report that don't really have anything to do with your data.
Because that doesn't have any bearing on your?
Your financial position.
That explains why I haven't seen it. Okay, thank you.
And I'm gonna go over really quickly the couple things in our little book. There is a minor finding related to the ASSA of speech-only students that was reported on, you know, in the, I think, on the wrong screen. I think it's just because of whether it's a computer upload issue or something like that, but your financial administration is aware of it and is being fixed, and it will be resolved. And as I said before, this is a minor issue, and you know? Oh, H6, yes. And other than that, I, you know, financial administration has always done a wonderful job, and I commend them for having another excellent year, and for being, you know, so tolerant of us when we come out here for the audit, so appreciate it.
How long does the audit take?
Typically, it takes about a week.
Of onsite?
Of onsite, and then there's also when we are offsite, it takes about, you know, to finalize everything, write the reports, so it probably takes another additional.
We just finished last week.
Another weekend's work.
Yeah.
That's very efficient.
We try to be, but it, it takes a while to get this book together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Well, I wish everybody a nice Thanksgiving.
Take it well, thank you very much. I think for those that are interested, New Jersey School Boards does do a workshop on how to understand these things, because it's, for anyone that's in business accounting, it's very, very, very different than, than government accounting. Let's see, we need to go to the board business representative. I'm welcome.
Fall sports are almost over, with winter sports beginning after Thanksgiving break. The football team won 16-6 against Quirrell Lee in the North Jersey Section 1 Group 1 game on November 12th. They will move on to play Waukega on Saturday at Franklin High School at 10:30 a.m. for the semifinal round of the Group 1 tournament. Girls soccer won 4-2 against Glenbridge on November 5th in the New Jersey Section 2 Group 1 final. They also won 5-1 against Point Pleasant Beach on November 12th in the Group 1 tournament. On Monday, the junior girls played against the senior girls in the annual Powder Pub game. The seniors won with a score of 16-0. The fall drama production is almost made. The opening show is tomorrow at 7:30 p.m. Two more shows are on Saturday at 2:00 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. All seats are $12, so make sure to order them online before they sell out. The last of the college representatives came today, and we had an amazing list of schools that came, and all were all attended. Thanksgiving break starts next week with a half day on Wednesday and November 23rd, and no school Thursday and Friday. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And as always, if you have somewhere else you need to be, homework or anything else, please go ahead, we will not be offended. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to board business. Oh, that's my parliament here, and I can either just introduce board business motion one, or one and two, and motion to table two.
What do you, we can, you can table it now, if you want to do it separately, you can take two motions and then table one, whatever your preference.
So?
Are you planning on tabling which one?
Uh, two.
Two later, okay. If you want to table, take that as a separate one if you want.
Okay, all right, so we'll do it that way, so we'll do, well?
Just introduce one?
Yeah, so at this point, we'll entertain a motion to approve board business motion number one. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
I'll let John call it. Are there any, any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of board business motion number one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. And any abstentions? Okay, and at this point, I guess we can do table of board business motion?
You can table until?
Until the end of the meeting, after close session.
Close session, okay. That'll be your motion.
Yep, so at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to table board business motion number two until after our close session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Probably not. Questions on the adoption of board business motion, to table board business motion number two, will those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? Any abstentions? And that brings us to administrative reports, starting with the business administrator, Board Secretary, Mr. Murray.
Just a couple things to follow up, as you know, we had a November election, and these are the unofficial preliminary votes, uh, results. Yeah, Mr. Brander with 1,230 votes, Mrs. Hermy with 1,175 votes, and Mrs. Waika, Waika with 1,153, and there were actually 56 write-ins, but I don't have all the details on that. Certified results probably won't be received for another week or so. The New Jersey School Boards Conference, Dr. Angelo Lo and Mr. Brander and I attended the School Boards Association Conference down in Atlantic City. There were a number of excellent training sessions. I participated really in facility project, legal, parliamentary procedures, conducting board meetings, just to name a few, and I found there was a lot of valuable information, not only in the presenters, but in the sharing with colleagues. So a lot of valuable things in board operations, running board meetings, things like that, business office operations, so we're evaluating now what we can implement, either right now or make recommendations for the future. The fall reports, the DRTRS, which is a transportation report, was filed last week by, before the deadline, and the ASSA is coming up, will be filed on December 2nd. The tentative budget schedule, I handed that out to you, two pages, basically we operate off of this, very preliminary, but in September, October, gathering all the information, right now we're gathering from staff, the teachers, and office staff. We'll have the information to us by December, and then in January, we'll start with committee meetings, presentations, at board meetings. And the election calendar is not out yet, the new budget calendar, so generally, April, May is when we submit it for approvals in the county superintendent, and then our public hearing will be within two weeks, so May 5th, I'm predicting, unless they dramatically change the calendar. And there'll always be opportunities at each of those meetings for public comment. That's all I have.
What's the ASSA?
ASSA is an application for state school aid, that goes, that's the October 14th or October 15th count, but that happened to be a Friday, so it was the 14th. And that's the number that you lock in and they base your state A off. So we're still formulating all of that, verifying with all of our sending, receiving, to look at all of the status replacements, to make sure that we're all in sync and don't have any other reports, and then we file it. That'll be our official status report right now.
Is that what impacts our extraordinary A that we have proceeded?
No, extraordinary A is, is basically an amount that they have for, that districts will spend for an individual over $40,000, so if a placement is 80, they calculate, the calculation is based on that excess of 40. They put it into a big pool, they see who applies for it and how much they apply, and then they divide it up, as our auditor had said, that it's running at those percentages because, I guess those are the districts that applied for it. So no, it has no, no bearing on that, but we're afraid that that, we've been using successfully for projects, afraid it's gonna dry up, you know, over the next year or so, but no, they keep replenishing it.
Okay, great, well, thank you, and thank you. And that brings us to the superintendent's report, Dr. Angelo Lo.
Okay, good evening, everyone. As you're aware, we had our first successful strategic planning session on November 7th. Lots of great feedback, I heard great feedback, obviously, at the meeting itself, and then feedback afterwards from many of the folks that were in attendance, so we're looking forward to our next session, which is on the 29th of November at 7:00 p.m. It's hard to believe that the first working period has come and gone already, so the first working period's come to a close. We've reminded our, our parents in the community that grades will be available to view via the Genesis Parent Portal tomorrow, so look for that. In celebration of American Education Week this week, parents were able to visit the school yesterday during periods two and three to catch a glimpse of all of the wonderful programming that we have here for our students and the tremendous job that our faculty, staff, and teachers did. So I'm grateful that so many parents came and took the time to visit with us. Winter sports, Madison McBride brought it up, it's hard to believe also that fall sports is coming down. We've already started out with basketball tryouts for our boys and girls, and we're looking forward to our first games of the winter season on December 5th, as they kick off their seasons. And the final thing that we have is coming down the pike that's of a big nature, is our Home and School Association is sponsoring a fun-run fundraiser that will take place next week, the 21st, weather permitting. It's, it's a shine event, not a rain event, so if it's sunny out, we'll be outdoors, if it's raining, we're gonna figure out a way to put it off until Tuesday, and if it extends beyond that, we'll have it in force. So we're accommodating for a number of different scenarios, but we appreciate the job the HSA has done with that, and we look forward to participating in it with our kids on Monday. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to commendations by Dr. Angelo Lo.
Okay, commendations this evening. Thank you to our faculty for the valuable and effective conferences with Parents and Guardians in October. Much appreciation to the Home and School Association room parents for their help in getting students ready for the Halloween 3rd, and for the treats and fun activities afterwards. Many thanks to all of the members of the community who attended the first strategic planning meeting on November 7th. We're looking forward to the next two sessions in the process, and appreciate everyone's input. Congratulations to Mrs. Bartel on a wonderful concert in honor of Veterans Day that was held last Wednesday. The students sang beautifully, and the readers were very good, too. Many thanks to our families and staff members who shared artifacts. Our students enjoyed the displays and the showcases throughout the school. Kudos to our soloists Brayden Long and Nina DeRosa. Finally, many thanks to Mrs. Kathy DiYanni for spending September, October, and most of November with us, teaching kindergarten while Ms. Cool was on leave. It goes without saying that her experience and knowledge of all things RBS was of tremendous help, got those students off to a great start this year in kindergarten. Spotlight on student work for October. In preschool, Riley Smith and Hannah Waika. In kindergarten, Lanny He, Yara Polito, Justin Swine, and Lily Cupkis. In first grade, Mirabelle Azanari, Dakota Ray Eger, Juliet Elers, and Cameron Guzman. In second grade, Ella Beermeister, Charlotte Lang, Miles Lawrence, Asher Matthews, Stone Papa, and Bea Vanderstraten. And in third grade, Zach Guzman, Colton Harris, Sasha Patty, and Declan Velasquez. And congratulations to our Falcons of the Month for October. In fifth grade, Annabella Lern. In sixth grade, Joey Barba. In seventh grade, Zach Sportelli. And eighth grade, Sasha Brontos. And those are our commendations for the evening.
Thank you. And that brings us to correspondence one through three, which you've all had a chance to look at. And that brings us to open session number one. The first public comment period will be limited to agenda items only. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and data, the operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain of command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Anyone from the public wish to address the board on agenda items at this time? Okay, thank you. And that brings us to turn the page. These are reports, starting with the Education Foundation.
Okay, so we often forget this, but I want to say their meeting, next meeting's tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. in the library. All new and old BTF members are welcome to come. They have a, there was ball festival, they supplied pumpkins for each child, decorating items, they have help from Ms. Cuzzo and the student council, and the event was a total blast for the kids. We hope to continue to support this each year. There's a new Trep's program coming to RBS on behalf of the BTF. This is an entrepreneurial program that will be offered to fifth grade students. They'll attend a four-week class to get skills they need to start and run a business, and then they'll have an opportunity to sell their products at an RBS marketplace. They awarded a new grant for $1,000 to the Mountain Lakes School for the Death. Um, they awarded a new grant for a thousand dollars to the Mountain Lakes School, um, for the deaf, what's the rest? Thank you, that, yes, thank you, to the Lake Drive School for their annual trip, um, to help with their costs. Six more grants were approved just today, uh, for RBS teachers totaling eleven hundred dollars. This marks the end of the rolling application for time grants for, um, for the grants for 2022, and will reopen in 2023 for both Mountain Lakes High School and RBS. Um, and the spring musical for 2023 will be Annie Junior.
Great, thank you. And Home and School Association?
So I was unfortunately unable to attend this month's Home and School Association, but there were two things I wanted to mention. One, just to reiterate what Dr. Angelo said, the fundraiser is coming up on November 1st. And just a general reminder that the meetings are every Tuesday, uh, first Tuesday, sorry, of every month, if anybody wants, if anyone wants to join. Next month, I'll let anybody know if there's anything I missed.
Great, thank you. And Morris County School Boards Association?
Yes, um, the meeting was about a week ago. Um, and what I did right prior to this meeting in our shared board folder, I uploaded a follow-up, which is kind of like a, a high-level notes from the county liaison, as well as a great update on, um, a presentation and a YouTube video. And let me explain what that is all about. It's an HIV and ethics update, so there is about a hundred and thirty slides synced in the shared folder. But what's really unique this time, if you go into that folder and you look at the follow-up document, there's an actual link to the YouTube presentation, and it's really good. You have to go about thirty-seven minutes in, or you're going to be looking at a lot of other, um, earlier board presentation, or earlier presentations at the county meeting. But give yourself about an hour, if you really want a great overview of some changes, and a great presentation by the attorney who went through these slides. He's a fast talker, so he got through most of them. Um, the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and three. It's all virtual, so also in that follow-up document, there is a link to register as all board members. You can go to these meetings, it doesn't have to just be the liaison, or in Barry's case, the president. There's going to be a couple of great presentations, um, how to read a board secretary report, how to get things on the BOE agenda, and how to recognize staff and students. So those three breakouts will all be held virtual, so it might be a great opportunity to really get some training and, um, participate in a great meeting.
Did you say January twenty-fifth?
January twenty-fifth, yes. Now, it's a Wednesday, I don't know if we have a meeting that night, I didn't look at that.
Yeah, we haven't, um, we haven't scheduled it yet, so perhaps we won't schedule it that night if we didn't help.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
We haven't, uh, yeah, we haven't done next year's schedule yet.
Okay, so maybe, maybe we can go, um, yeah, so take a look at those materials, again, really unique that they shared out the actual YouTube presentation.
Excellent. Uh, yes, I, I attended that as well, lots of useful information, and the attorney was great, like he had a, a good way about his presentation. And a lot of information, he went through it very, you know, there's so much, we went through it very quickly. And all, and for those that have not attended a Morris County School Boards Association meeting, I highly recommend it. Usually they're somewhere not far away from here. When they're in person, they, uh, they serve like a meal sponsored by a corporate sponsor from somewhere, so it's not being paid by anyone, you know, any tax dollars in that regard. And you, you usually arrive at six o'clock, and by six forty-five to seven o'clock, they begin their presentations, and they're, they're, you know, always very informative, you know. And, you know, any of us can go, it's free of charge, there's no cost, all you have to do is go online, you don't have to go through John to register, because they're, they're free.
So you're, you're using a password?
Yeah, so you just have to log on to your New Jersey School Boards account and register, and you're underway. But always, always a great presentation, I have to put the plug in. Okay, and thank you, and that brings us to New Jersey School Boards Association.
Next, the delegate assembly is the nineteenth.
Soon. Okay, um, and I guess if someone wanted to go, can they still register to be the delegate? I know you can, I think you can attend if you want to.
We're going to check out tomorrow.
Yeah, but, but if you want to be the voting delegate of our board, you know, there might be some additional groups. Okay, and I guess this will be a, a good spot to pass this stuff along. Um, I, I, too, went to the New Jersey School Boards Association workshop, uh, it was very, you know, I've never been before, so it was very informative, great. I loaded my schedule up with many, many things, like I, I, before I went, I mapped out my three days and, um, just had stuff piled up. And, and then in between, they have an exhibit floor with many vendors and, um, and all sorts of things. I, I focused on, um, um, inclusive education and board, board governance classes. And then when I went out onto the exhibit floor, it's like funny, there's a lot of stuff, it's like, nope, John Murray, John Murray, architect, nope, John Murray, and then, ah, you know, I stopped at this place. So, uh, but it was a, it was a whirlwind, I have to say. I, uh, wasn't quite enough time to do everything you wanted to do there, but I, you know, highly recommend it, and for anyone that has not gone. And at the third day, when everyone was leaving, and there was still a pile of these around, I figured, let me bring them along for anyone that wants to just see what they have to offer. So I'm gonna, they were just going to recycle them, so why not promote that? So, two, three, four, if you don't mind. Yeah, at your leisure, yeah, that's just an example, you know, you can look and see what types of work, you know, uh, items that they offer there, but, uh, highly recommend that. And that brings us to Township Committee.
Nothing to report.
And Mountain Lakes.
Good evening, everyone. At our last meeting in Mountain Lakes, we had the AP Performance Presentation. The presentation was loaded with all kinds of numbers, and I did my best to write them down with the intention of viewing the video afterwards. I checked today on the YouTube channel, the video is not up yet, so I'll do my best to get some of these numbers straight. But essentially, in all content areas, English, art, math, practical arts, science, social studies, and world languages, as a whole, in every single area, the majority of the students scored a three or higher. Apparently, three is a good benchmark to reach. Including math, eighty-eight percent scored three or higher. I was really thrilled to hear that, and what I was especially thrilled to hear was ninety-seven percent scored three or higher in English, which is phenomenal, really. And I think, I know that a lot of that English background starts right here in RBS, and continues on, because you don't learn that all just in a few years. Okay, seventy-eight students earned the AP Scholar with Distinction. In order to be an AP Scholar with Distinction, you have to score a three or higher on five or more exams. So that means seventy-eight students took five or more exams and scored a three or higher on all of them, or at least five or more. That honestly just blows my mind, I'm not even really sure where, when they studied for this. But, um, at any rate, the next AP test, uh, there was another chart that showed the number of, uh, Mountain Lakes students scoring three or higher cumulatively, and the, the chart just goes up and up and up. So every year, more and more students are really doing well on that exam. So I thought that was, that was honestly phenomenal, even when you think about the couple of years of the pandemic and stuff, it really, these students have been really great.
Jonathan, the scholar you mentioned, the five or more AP, is it over their course of four, three years at Mountain Lakes? Or is it in their senior year?
Oh, that's a good question.
I would think five, I would think it's over the course.
Either way, it's impressive. That's a great question, I don't know, you know, I wanted, I really wanted to watch.
It's not like they're taking five for senior year, they may be one, two, and two or something.
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, it's probably over the course. I really wanted to watch that part of the presentation again to get better, to get all these numbers for you. But, uh, just the video was not available. Yeah, that'd be a lot, seventy-eight taking five or four.
I'm thinking it's over the course of their high school.
It could be juniors and seniors.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, that, that's just, um, another testament to, to what's going on over there, a lot of good things. And of course, AP testing this year is May 1st to 12th, in case anybody here cares. It's the same, I was told it's the same nationwide, so there you have it. Lot of other little presentations, superintendent reports. The next coffee talk is December thirteenth, and it's virtual via Teams at noon, so if anyone, uh, wants to get on that and have coffee talk with the superintendent, again, December thirteenth at noon, and it's virtual via Teams. The only other thing to add to Ms. McBride's amazing student update earlier was, if you want to go to that football game, or I think also a soccer game we're in during the tournament, you have to buy tickets ahead of time. It's the state of New Jersey Athletics that sells tickets. They don't have the website, but I'm sure if you really want to go, uh, you can track that down, so that's a friendly reminder there. Got to buy those tickets ahead of time, and also, the high school's fall drama production starts Friday night, or actually, it starts tomorrow night, and it's in the brand-new auditorium. So if you want to check out the auditorium and the production called Almost Mean, then, uh, then you can go tomorrow night, and tickets are available. And I don't, oh, it's M L H S dot book ticks, T I X, dot com. That concludes my report.
Great. Were there any agenda items that were of interest to the Board of Education besides the?
Yeah, it's a good question. I went through the agenda and, not really, it's very similar to this, it's, um, policy, policy revisions, similar to here, they take what's, uh, they take the standard language, tell it to themselves. Other notes I really had here were around, they did their NJ SLA presentation as well. Can't say it was really too different than, um, than what we saw here in terms of some of the overall trends and, um, descriptions of what was going on and what's going on. They also used Lincoln data over there, which I know we've, we've had a little correspondence from our superintendent around that. That just informs, another data point to inform their teachers on where they're going with focus areas and things like that for particular students. That was really it. Um, we haven't had the, the audit report that we had here tonight, that hasn't happened yet, I believe that's going to be at the next meeting. Yeah, nothing, nothing really else. Uh, they talked about staff training through something called Save Schools on HIB, HIV. And actually, this was interesting, all guidance counselors are anti-bullying specialists certified. That's pretty much it, everything else is your standard, um, approving volunteers. Longest of that stuff.
Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome. That brings us to Educational Services Commission, I attended their meeting on November 9th, that was last week, uh, it was pretty much a routine agenda as well. Um, they did a presentation, actually, on the special services that they offer to, uh, districts around Morris County. And that brings us to the Boot Township team.
I missed the last meeting, so I will breeze these notes that I have from the league, so feel free to jump in if I put them in here. Community garden outside, I think we, um, the team is looking for a volunteer to help develop a plan for the spring garden. Last time, I think I talked about something called Sustainable NJ, which is something that the town can get, um, certified for and also need help in volunteers to help, um, establish kind of a plan of how we get there. There is a, uh, Boot Township Girl Scout who is doing a gold award project that's going to be advised by Eve Fusco from, from the group, um, from the school, and she's actually part of the Boot Township team, and will help, um, fill some of the Sustainable NJ goals. Um, and let me see here, collaboration between the RBS Environmental Club, so I know that there's a new club this year with Mrs. Anis and Mrs. Karadi, um, and just collaborating with that group, and so some of the things that you see outside for, like, recycling and the clothing, stuff that's going on, it's being sponsored through the Environmental Club, and we're going to work with them, so. Does sort of, it's nice, uh, meet every first Friday at U Camp.
Great, thank you very much. And that brings us into our motions. First, we have a motion for facilities transportation, facilities motion one, may I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of facilities, motion number one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? Any abstentions? The next items on the agenda are finance motions one through eight, may I have a motion, please? Go three at a time. Uh, may I have a second? Are there any, any questions, comments, or discussion? And if not, the questions on the adoption of finance motions one through eight, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no? Any abstentions? That brings us to personnel motions, one through four, may I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
Second.
That was easy. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
So I have a quick question, um, personnel one, uh, Kevin O'War, we received his letter of resignation, and then we're approving him, am I?
Yeah, it's, I think we're accepting your resignation, it says there.
Okay. So that's what that personnel motion is, oh, resignations, okay, sorry, I was thinking of hiring, now they're resigning, okay, we got it.
Changes my quick.
Yeah, hire and fire.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of personal motions one through four, this is a roll call.
Mr. Barnick?
Yes.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes.
Mrs. Cabana?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hermy?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. LeVar?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is program motion number one, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of program motion number one, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Any abstentions? And that brings us to policies for first reading. And, let's see, it's up to, I have some notes, or, uh, Mrs. Cabana, does it matter?
Yeah, I can go over it, I have it pocket right here. The first one, five-one-four-one-six, it, um, and, and none of these are critical policies, that five-one-four-one-six, we will readopt that. And it's covered, this is, actually, this policy is covered by mandated training, which occurs every five years. Um, and there was no changes to that one. Five-one-four-one-seven, uh, the only change was the website on that policy, and, um, that will just be readopted. Five-one-four-one-three-two, HIV AIDS, that one, we were going to keep our policy and remove one sentence from it. There was a fourth paragraph down that was going to be removed, that was the only change on that one. And the last one, five-one-four-three, is readoption, we're just going to readopt it, it's a quick two-sentence thing about student accident insurance. And that was it for the first reads.
Okay, great, thank you. And that also brings us to policy, motion number one, which is a second reading, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of policy, motion number one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? Any abstentions? There are no technology motions, that brings us to open session number two. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to give comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and data to the operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain of command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on any matter?
Eileen Brantner, Non-Mecca Drive, I'm here to update the board on CPAC, which is Special Education Parent Advisory Group. CPAC ended the month of October with a meeting between RBS administration and parent leaders on October twenty-fifth. Many thanks to Dr. Lindis and Mrs. Orhees for the time spent discussing questions that arose from their September navigating, navigating special ed at RBS presentation, as well as the subsequent October eighteenth parent list. arose from their September navigating special ed at RBS presentation, as well as the subsequent October eighteenth parent listening time. Last night's November fifteenth meeting was the final meeting of two thousand twenty-two. There was a general roundup of recent school presentations and events, and parent leaders presented feedback from the meeting with administration. It was an especially great turnout with many more faces, thanks to everyone who came out in the ring. There will be no CPAC activity in December except for submission of our semi-annual report to parent members, administration, and board of ed. Our next parent meeting will be on January seventeenth at the United Methodist Church. We are planning to host a parent-led presentation on IEP goals and objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. And would anyone else from the public wish to address the board on any matter?
Ellen Hardy, twenty-fourth floor, Rock Road. First of all, thanks again for a wonderful strategic planning session. I really appreciated having the opportunity to collaborate on a plan to make our school even better for the future. But I wanted to follow up on NJ SLA scores. We all know how much the pandemic has affected our children, but I do want it to obscure the fact that our scores were declining for several years before the pandemic. I also want to reinforce the importance of comparative analysis. What you have in front of you are select slides from Mountain Lakes' NJ SLA presentation. Their full presentation is on their website. And one of the things that I will call out is a big difference from our presentation is that they compared their scores to state averages. As comparative analysis is actually required by the New Jersey Department of Ed. Mountain Lakes use the state template, which is online, which makes it very easy. You'll actually see a page in there that has, one, an excerpt of the state regulations requiring comparative analysis, and secondly, a sample slide from the state's template. So you can see that the state data is actually already in there in those slides. So my question is, why did our presentation not include state averages? Secondly, you will see that Mountain Lakes share their science scores. Why did our presentation not include any science scores? The New Jersey Department of Ed requires science to be reported to the Board of Ed, actually highlighted on their policy there. And it is very important data, because if you looked at the science data that I actually emailed to the board, it suggests that seventy-five percent of our now ninth graders failed science. Again, that's three out of four of our current ninth graders failed science. You will also see, when you flip through the pages, how our scores compared to Mountain Lakes, as I actually took the time to edit Mountain Lakes scores and I put our scores on there. What you'll see as you look at the scores is that there are many significant gaps between their scores and our scores on ENA, math, and science. I keep bringing this up, because that is where our kids are going to be going to school, and we need to better prepare them. I'm hoping that going forward, we can work more closely with the Mountain Lakes School District to make this happen. I also wanted to make note of the fact that I've repeatedly asked for the links for our two thousand nineteen and two thousand eighteen test presentations to be put back on the website, but Dr. Lindis declined, saying that the data is available in the current presentations. What's missing, however, is the verbiage that was in those presentations that conflicts with the data, so I'm asking again that it be reinstated so that there is complete transparency with the community. Finally, I previously mentioned my wish that RBS present subgroup data, which they did in two thousand nineteen, but not this year. I struggle to understand why our special ed students were blamed in part for the low scores, yet no subgroup data for kids without IEPs was shared as proof. As you know, I've sent you links from other schools and other school district presentations have, it's very common for them to show data that isolates gen ed populations. At the suggestion of a board member, I even offered to collaborate with Dr. Lindis on pulling that data together, but she did not take me up on my offer.
That's one minute.
And when the administration says that they want to protect IEP kids, why would they then show a chart that showed all but one out of thirty-one special ed children failed math? It also seemed highly insensitive to show a cartoon to highlight this point, using animals to represent the IEP children. I know that my time is limited, so I will just ask two questions again. One, why did our presentations have no state averages? And two, why were the science scores not presented? The state averages and science information was clearly available.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Would this be something I would refer to Dr. Lindis, or to you for further comment?
It should be referred to me, and then I'll disseminate it to the appropriate personnel.
Okay. Would you be so kind as to reach out to Dr. Angelolo with your, to further discuss the issues?
Okay, I have written letters, so I'll write another letter. And I'll just finish then by letting you know that when the district factor data also is available in January, I will share that with you too. Because it's really important that we look at this data in detail and we don't just gloss over it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address the board on any matters? If not, that brings us to old business, certainly old business to come before the board. Is there any new business to come before the board? And at this point, I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss issues that warrant confidentiality as permitted in the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one of laws of nineteen seventy-five. These matters may or may not be made public when the board reconvenes. They will be made public when the confidentiality of the subject is no longer warranted. And the topic is student matters, and we will take board action when we reconvene on the motion we tabled earlier.
I'm sorry, I was still contemplating things. I did have some comments for old business.
Okay, please.
Sorry.
Tell them for you.
So in regards to the NJ SLA presentation, and to the fact that we also, as board members, are often receiving presentations and comments from the public, and I'm not sure that they're always aware of how we hear them, and so I just had some thoughts I wanted to share. And that, I wanted to thank Dr. Lindis for her presentation of the NJ SLA results and the many hours of analysis, dissection, data, and her time communicating with our neighboring school districts, and for reaching out to their administrators to understand the trends. More importantly, I want to thank you for, as the Director of Curriculum, for breaking down the data and working with our teachers to understand the test results, identify the standards that needed to be supported, and where to bolster our curriculum. As a board member, I'm painfully aware of some of the grades were hit harder than others during the pandemic, and that the overall results need to be improved. More importantly, oh, sorry, the good news is that we do have dedicated, trusted, and caring teachers who have our support and have data and information to spot what questions and what standards need to be improved, and which students struggled, and who needs reinforcement. Please know, RBS is not unique. Recently, a bill has been proposed, introduced, to propose a moratorium on introducing new state standards, it's called ACR one sixty-two. And in the bill, it says something that I'd like to share with you, because I found it interesting. It said, whereas the COVID-nineteen pandemic has erased as much as two decades of progress in student achievement in mathematics and reading, and whereas the United States fell to its lowest ever score overall in competitiveness in the most recent administration of the Program for International Student Assessment Test, dropping five places in ranking in mathematics performance and having made little improvement in reading. And I point this out not as an excuse, but as a reason that we will need to continue to support our teachers and seek to learn from the data, and strategize for future academic needs of our students, and keep the lines of communication open between RBS and Mountain Lakes High School, to continue to, and so that our students are equally supportive and challenged in a, as a transition district. While I see it's very important to see how our district performs to the Lake schools and future classmates in the high school, I feel it's most important for us to use this information to help our students overcome challenges, as well as understand the lessons learned, and how to strategize for the future, and what we can have learned. Should we have another disaster interrupter education? What have we learned? And I think that these are the things that are keeping RBS educators and administrators up at night, so I thank them. And I also want to thank Mrs. Hardy for her hard work and the time researching scores and presentations of other districts, and presenting your findings to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Herman. Is there any other new business to come before the board?
Old business, I just reminded me, were we going to wait till the reorg to talk about the CPAC liaison, or were we going to do that now?
I'd probably throw it out in our committees and talk about it at the next meeting, because we haven't had a chance, I think, since last, because we have two different rounds of time off for staff and no committee meetings.
When we reorg, is it in January?
Yes.
At that January, and there's no December meeting, but Lauren does attend the meeting and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, but probably, probably start there, you know, start there, kick it around in our committees, and then at the next meeting, if we have a full board discussion, we can talk then, you know, and then January is the reorg, we'll talk about that. But thank you. And is there any other new business to come before the board? If not, I'll have to read that again. And thank you for all of your comments. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss issues that warrant confidentiality as permitted in the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one of laws of nineteen seventy-five. These matters may or may not be made public when the board reconvenes, they will be made public when the confidentiality of the subject is no longer warranted. The discussion topic is student matters, and we will take action when the board reconvenes on the motion we tabled earlier in the meeting. And other than that, I believe there's no other action other than adjourning. And with that, may I have a motion, please? Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And for the, since the motion that we are voting on, when we come back out, we'll have notes, having a discussion in closed session, there will be no, no discussion other than voting on that motion, and then adjourning, so for those that want to wait, we can come back in and watch that. If not, have a great Thanksgiving to those that you are not saying, and we'll see you soon. At this time, we have made a motion to return to public session, and now we're going to have a motion to remove Board Business Motion Two from the table. May I have that motion, please?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And at this time, I have a motion to approve Board Business Motion Number Two.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And, and I guess we already did all of our questions, comments, or discussion in executive session, so at this point, the questions on the adoption of Board Business Motion Number Two, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to, there is no other board action, may I have a motion to adjourn?